When arrived, we will call the meeting of the Hastings Planning Commission to Order. This is our February 13th, 2018, meeting. This is a regular meeting. Our first order of business is actually an oath of office. Mike, it says it's on. Yeah. I'm having techni- for those at home who are having technical difficulties with the mic, I guess. I don't know. Okay. First order of business is oath of office for Commissioner Bars.
All right. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Rob Bars, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America."
"I, Rob Bars, do solemnly affirm that I will uphold..."
Support.
Support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the City of Hastings.
And the ordinances of the City of Hastings.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties of planning commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties of planning commissioner.
Of the City of Hastings.
Of the City of Hastings.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
Counties of Dakota and Washington.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Upon the best of my ability and understanding.
Thank you. All right. Next item up, approval of the minutes from our January 8th, 2018, meeting. Commissioners, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Alpa. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Harvey, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, prior to public hearing, I'd like to recuse myself from discussion as I'm employed by McShane Development, applicant.
All right. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing for the McShane Development. Site plan preliminary and final plat for the medical office building at 1465 North Frontage Road. I think we'll actually go with the staff report first and then we'll have the public hearing after.
Thank you, Commissioner Dever. This .65 acre site is presently owned by the City of Hastings. The city and McShane Development have entered into a purchase agreement for sale and development of the parcel. The site was recently re-designated as commercial in the 2030 comprehensive plan and from road, and it's been rezoned to C1 commercial. The site development is consistent with those classifications. Tonight we'll hold a public hearing to consider replating the outlot to a billable lot and development of the lot into a 3,500 square foot, single tenant dental office building. As you recall, this is a street view of the property. I'll present both items, and I'll start with the plat. A preliminary plat is a document review to see how lots and easements will be laid out. At this time, the city staff, county staff, commissioners, and city council review the preliminary plat to make sure it meets the requirements. Approving the preliminary plat gets the review and work out of the way ahead of time. When the property owner is ready to move forward on development of the property, they'll request a final plat approval. At that time, it's reviewed to assure that it meets the requirements and agreements made during the preliminary plat review. This is typically done at the same time for a project that's going to be completed in one phase. For larger, multi-phase projects, there may be many years between a preliminary and a final plat. This is a fairly simple replat of Outlot E Whispering Oaks First Edition to become Lot 1 Block 1 Whispering Aspen Edition. An outlot is often a placeholder for future subdivision and can't be built on until then. There's only one lot on this subdivision, and there's not any public streets proposed as part of the plat. Next, we have the site plan proposal. There's one ingress and egress to the site, and it's situated far enough away as it can be from the intersection to not cause any issues with backing up of vehicles. And we like to see generally internal sidewalks connecting to public sidewalks. There is a public sidewalk on Pleasant Drive. The site is sunk down from that approximately six feet is the gray differential between those two sidewalks. So connecting those sidewalks is problematic and would not be accessible. Our parking requirements are fairly generic for most uses. The closest requirement we have to dental office would be professional office uses, which requires one space per 300 square feet of building size. While this is an office, it does have customers that come to it also. So the minimum necessary spaces would be 12, and they're proposing 29. The zoning code does only allow up to 20% more parking spaces than the minimum required amount unless the city council grants an exemption. The proposed floor plan includes 11 dental chairs, and they envision having 11 employees to service those chairs, plus they would anticipate up to 11 people waiting to be serviced next by those employees and those chairs. They normally, the LSE requires 33 spaces for their projects, but they made an exception in this case because only 29 spaces easily fit onto the site, and they believe it'll be adequate. The landscaping plan meets the minimum planting requirements based on the perimeter size of the parcel and the amount of pavement on site. They're proposing to have 17 trees, which is the requirement, and proposing 46 shrubs with the requirement of 17 shrubs. The building facade must consist of 65% Class 1 or 2 materials, with Class 1 materials making at least 25%. Class 1 materials would include glass, brick, stone, and similar type materials, and over half of the building is proposed that material. Class 2 would include evis, drivet, and some higher-end siding materials. The proposal easily adheres to those architectural standards. This is the north side of the building. This would be the opposite, the south side. This would be the back of the building. And this is the proposed front elevation of the building. A photometric plan was submitted for the site plan, and the footcandle illumination is below the one-foot footcandles allowed at the property line. The lighting is acceptable as long as it's connected to an automatic control that will reduce the lighting levels when the property is not in operation. A couple other additional items just to note. The city council will also consider vacation of roadway easement that was created prior to the plating and construction of North Frontage Road in the 1970s. The easement has become redundant with the road having been built there. And the city council will also enter into development agreement for any public improvements, including the water main extension that's planned for the project. The proposal's been sent to MINDOT for review because it's adjacent to a state right-of-way, and no comments have been received by them at this time. And staff also posted legal notice for the proposal. We haven't heard any comments back related to that. And staff recommends approval of the proposal subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And I can stand for any questions or allow the chair to open to the public hearing first.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity, if anybody out there has a comment on this particular development, now is the time to make it. So are any takers? All right. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners.
I've got a couple questions. The commercial lighting, when it's this close to residential, is it different, or is it just commercial lighting is this way?
If they're adjacent to residential, the property line can't have more than a half a foot candle of light. If they're adjacent to non-residential, it can be up to a one-foot candle.
Is this considered close enough to the residential, or is it far enough away to avoid that?
Yeah, it's not directly adjacent, so they are only required to maintain the one-foot candle. But it's far under the one-foot candle. In most areas, it's zero.
I'll have another question.
Go ahead.
The MINDOT evaluation, is that being done, that's being done strictly for Highway 55? That has nothing to do with Pleasant, correct?
Right.
Okay. So when that road was put in there to go to the government center, was it set up to accommodate additional traffic other than the employee, it's kind of an employee entrance?
Yeah. I mean, it's mostly used by employees for the government center, but it's a public street.
Public street.
And anyone can obviously use that. And it's fairly low volume.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there children? Is it like a braces dentist, or is it, I mean, is there a large volume of probably younger people coming to it with, I'm just, I heard about the sidewalk. There is not going to be one. So are we going to have any children trying to walk there? That they're going to be dealing with Highway 55 in a non-control intersection at the Frontage Road and Pleasant?
I think there's an agent here for the applicants that maybe could answer that question. I'm not sure of the clientele that would be most often visiting the site.
Good evening. I'm Tim McShane, McShane Development. To answer your question, it's general dentistry, so it would be, I guess, similar to any dentist. It's not focused on children particularly.
Okay. Nice to know. So, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Fortney, I think you noted that it was lower than the street by approximately six feet, and that was the reasoning for not putting in the sidewalk extension?
Yeah. The grading plan shows there's a six-foot differential between the sidewalk on Pleasant Drive and the sidewalk in front of the building.
It's not typical, then, to have a drop-down sidewalk into another sidewalk because that's a lot of maintenance in the winter, correct?
Yeah. I mean, the only way you could really do it would be, you know, stairs, which wouldn't be accessible. Otherwise, I don't know, you'd have to maybe do like a long switchback or something. And both of those are kind of difficult to maintain in the winter and can be more hazardous.
Is the sidewalk on that side of the road? It's, it is, so it would just stop for that block?
It continues to the north across North Frontage Road.
Okay. So that'll still be that way? It'll just be connection to the building? Okay.
Yep.
And like hours of operation, is that kind of your basic dental office Monday through Saturday?
Again, I'd have to defer to the applicant.
Basic.
Yeah.
I just, I'm a little concerned about the volume of, the increased volume of traffic for the intersection with it not being controlled, and then like when the employees get out of work and go to work, I mean, there's a fair amount of traffic that's already there that I've experienced. And then you've got school, yeah, that's probably not, it's enough deferred in towards Fourth Street, probably. You know, another thing that I had thought of that, well, maybe clarification here, for these pictures of the building, okay, the front is to the, faces west? Am I getting that correctly? Is this west facing?
This would face to the north.
This is north. The front is north.
Is that correct?
The front is west.
Oh, it's west.
It is west. Okay.
Okay. Oh, right. Because it goes perpendicular.
Okay. So then you're approach, you're coming into Hastings and you're driving along Highway 55. And what you will see when you come in from the west going to the east, you'll see the side of the building and, you know, the front first. But it's like, you know, then, so then what's going to be facing that everybody sees is going to be the back, probably where the dumpsters are. That's probably going to be Pleasant and 55? Yeah. Pleasant and 55 is where the garbage dumpsters are. I mean, granted, they've got to be covered. But your other, the only other scenario, I'm just, the aesthetics from the street, I think, is important in the look of the city, you know?
Sure.
Just like it is coming down Vermillion Street. So I think, you know, to be sure that we're paying attention to the aesthetics of the outside and what we're going to be looking at from the street.
I think one of the things to keep in mind here is that they're only required to use 25% Class 1 materials, and they're using 50%. I think they have a pretty good idea that this needs to be a nice building in this location. It's a heavy-traffic intersection.
Sure.
I don't know about the specifics. Maybe you guys could expound on how the garbage is being covered or the area where the, it's probably a fenced-in area or something, or is there going to be brick there as well?
That'll be similar finish to the exterior of the building.
Okay.
The garbage.
Which will look very, very nice. I've seen lots of those.
So south and rear is what faces?
It'll be brick and stone, then? The garbage enclosure will be brick and stone?
CMU.
See?
Is that?
You know, masonry unit. I mean, it's, so if you can look at the elevation there, it'll be very similar. And all four sides of the building are going to be similar. So there won't, there's no, there won't be a back to it, so to speak.
To your point, Lisa, you know, and just since we can talk about it, is it'd be nice to have the garbage on the other side, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
But either way, you're going to have a problem because one way, you're going to see the garbage, right?
Right.
Coming one way or the other way.
Right. Right. And then, you know, I mean, it's hard for me to visualize how much of a distance it is from the corner to the driveway because I already know that that gets pretty, it gets really busy there.
Yeah.
On that Pleasant-North-Frontage Road intersection. So I don't know, when it's that close to stoplights, do you just call it good and leave it like that?
I think it's fine because the client's going, the only thing I'm worried about is the client's going in there taking a left turn. When the government employees are leaving work, it's going to be hard for them. But that's only usually once a day. It's about 4:30 because I work there.
Sure.
But the other time, I mean, that road is pretty non-busy.
Yeah.
So as far as traffic counts on that road, it's not a problem. And it's definitely the best place to have the access is on that Frontage Road. And they put it as far away as possible, which was, I think, very wise.
Other questions and comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I think I might have brought this up before, but maybe we'll just reiterate. And the comment today that this site is, it's a bowl, right? You're saying it's six feet deep. Is there, is it currently functioning in some stormwater fashion? I mean, it's uphill from here all the way west, going up 55, and it's a ditch section. I'm just wondering to what extent stormwater management is going to be changed. The site, there's no accommodation for stormwater here. Do we know a little bit more about it? I also noticed that in the report, there's been a cursory review of the drainage and erosion control plan. I'm just wondering if that's going to be a glitch or if this has really been thought about.
Yeah. The engineering department has reviewed their plans, and they haven't found any issues that I'm aware of for their plans for the stormwater. They have some requirements that the post-development can't, you know, increase the site runoff stormwater conditions. And so they'll be reviewing, they'll continue to review the plans for that if they haven't finished them already.
Mr. Chair. So does that whole lot then sit at the lower ditch level, then?
Well, I-
If we're six feet down from the Frontage Road, it's got to be, and I know it drops off from 55, so the whole lot must be low there, then?
Well, yeah, the roadway is a little higher there. I know it, it's lower than the roadway is, but I think as you go north, it also maintains a similar elevation to the site. The Highway 55 is kind of a highway, high point in that area, and then it goes higher south of the 55.
One thing that I know exists over on that side of town is the water pressure. The water pressure over there is, for years, been bad, or I shouldn't say bad, but undesirable. And people really notice. I don't know where, you know, how the flow is, but I'd hate to make it worse for those people that have already had it not good for so long that this would take pressure from them. I have firsthand knowledge of that going on a few years ago. I mean, those guys on North-Frontage Road East, you know, have for years had problems It's something to do with the pressure and the flow from that station being right there, that the people right next to it or right along there suffer the most, which I don't really understand the concept of at all. But I do know that it's noticeable in that area. They don't have water pressure. You know, like the, some of them, commercial buildings that are along there had to add, at their cost, additional things to the building to have it pressurized high enough for the fire, fire spouts, or whatever they're called.
Yeah. I'm not aware of, that this could cause any issues with that, but I can pass those comments on to the engineering department to review.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Because it is, yeah, it is really, that station's right there.
Mm-hmm.
Up the street. But I know it's, yeah, it'll be interesting.
Mr. McShane, do you have any comments about the whole bowl situation? I mean, is, are we really building six feet down from street level? Is the driveway going to drop down six feet? As people talk about it, that's what it sounds like, so I wonder if it's worth a clarification.
Evening. Rob Bars, McShane Development. To address your question, so our plan with the site is to balance the site as is. So really, the six feet is relative to Pleasant and 55, not necessarily the North-Frontage Road. That does taper down in grade to where our point of access is. So it's not sitting six feet below over where our access point is. It's more in the corner right where the stoplight is, is the high point that we're managing. And also, Commissioner Johnson, just to answer your question about the stormwater, so we will be piping into existing infrastructure from the site to collect stormwater. And we did do some extra engineering calculations with the city to ensure that we're not impacting the capacity that they already have there and that there's no negative impact with what our site is doing. We also have a permit that we're, have out there with MINDOT as far as our impact on drainage into their ditch and area along their right-of-way.
So when people are, will be walking along that sidewalk, bicycles, kids, everybody that wants to use that sidewalk, is it, is there, I mean, is it a dangerous situation where that if they go off the sidewalk, they're going to go down in a fairly quick manner?
Great question. I would say we will be regrading along Pleasant, but it'll be similar to existing conditions now.
Okay.
And the sidewalk that's along Pleasant isn't going away.
Correct.
It will stay there, right?
Right. The challenge that we run into is that for us to connect, you know, with the drive-by ADA lawsuits that are taking place, you know, and we're sitting six feet below, you know, to maintain ADA compliance on our site becomes very challenging to do, given its compact
So going back again to the lighting thing, is it commercials properties, okay, they just need to meet the minimum? So the ones that turn them off totally outside of hours, that's voluntary? Is that what goes on?
There's not a minimum amount of lighting required. There's a maximum that they can cause to shine across the property line.
Okay. To shine across the property line.
Justin, I had a question. Can you explain a little more about the, as you were explaining the parking minimums and maximums, you mentioned a percentage over that was allowed that, it sounds like this is, is over the percentage over normally allowed?
Mm-hmm.
And would require that additional approval from city council? Can you just explain that?
Sure. So our zoning code has a table with several uses listed in it, giving the minimum parking requirements to make sure that sites will be providing enough parking spaces based on those general uses. It doesn't go into every use that you can think of. It's fairly limited. The code directs us to come up with choosing whichever category is most like the proposed. And the one that's most like the proposed is professional office. Unfortunately, they're not, you know, too similar. I mean, a professional office has a certain number of people that are going to be expected there all the time, and they don't generally have, you know, customers coming very often. In a dental office, you're going to have probably two-thirds of the people that are coming there, you know, not employees. And they're going to be coming there at the same time possibly as somebody that's, you know, being seen by them currently so they can be prepared for their appointment. So it is quite a bit, quite a bit more of a parking need than just a professional office category. So at one point, you know, we didn't want to have seas of asphalt on sites that aren't going to be used for parking. So at some point, we came up with a figure of 20% over what's required shouldn't be allowed unless they can have some justification as why it should be. Like in this case, they've showed that their model does require near what they are, you know, likely are to see there. And so it's definitely not a perfect plan, and no city's way of handling parking is perfect. All situations are different. We just try to do the best we can to make sure that, you know, 95% of the time, there's going to be a space for each person and that there's not going to be additional asphalt being put down that's not needed, causing extra stormwater issues and maintenance issues for the, for future tenants and owners.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. And this is part of me just learning what goes on here because I'm new. But when we've got, when they, when they propose a planting landscape, is, do they, does city code or anything involved with approving this have anything to do with requiring plantings that are maybe native plants, uninvasive type? I mean, is there ever an analysis of that part of it?
To a certain degree. For the benefit of some of the newer commissioners, I'll go over kind of what our landscape requirements are. They are required to have one tree per 50 feet of lot perimeter and one tree per 4,000 square feet of asphalt paving. And they're required to have one shrub per 40 feet of lot perimeter. And they have to show the species and the number and placement of those around the site. And our Parks Department and City Forester reviews that, and if they see any issues with any of the proposed varieties, they bring that up to our attention.
So that's been done already at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, you know, require certain species. There are some species that our City Forester doesn't like to see used in projects because it causes, you know, problems with maintenance or infestation. problems with, uh, maintenance or infestations or it's just not a, a very hardy in our climate, uh, type, um, plant.
Good.
Other questions or comments? Otherwise I'd be open to a motion.
Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to, um, to accept the, uh, conditions for this, uh, final plat- site plan as laid out by the staff.
Alright, so we have a motion for, uh, recommending approval of the, both the preliminary and final plat and the site plan.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this. Um, across the street, is that, that's still zone residential?
Correct.
Okay, so then, at... So that's, that's always kept in mind as far as approving everything? Is that the fact that it, there could be residential over there right now and what's being put there is, accommodates?
Sure.
You know, access plans for the future to that residential area? I just, I don't want any residential area within city limits to be...
Yeah, this development wouldn't preclude anything from being built over there residentially.
Okay, so the access over there is probably, well, probably from Pleasant?
I mean, yeah, we'd look at that during the time a plan came in for any development on that site.
Sure, but I guess, I guess one way or the other, they're gonna get in there. Whether it be from the Frontage Road or from Pleasant.
They'd probably get in there off of another road. There's another road farther down.
Withcrewe?
Yeah. That's my guess is how they'd use that for access, because it wouldn't, I don't know. I don't know if they'd want a residential access off of that road, but they could.
Okay, sorry.
It's alright. So I, I have a, a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'll second. Alright, Commissioner Harvey, seconds. Uh, all those in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Alright, uh, Justin, can you walk us through next steps on this?
Um, yeah, this, uh, will go to the city council at, uh, their next meeting, which will be, um, February twentieth, I believe. And that's also a Tuesday.
Alright. Welcome back. Alright, uh, next up on the agenda, uh, final plat review, uh, twenty eighteen dash zero eight, Walla- Wallen seventeenth edition. Justin?
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner Chair Deaver. Uh, this final plat is to create three new single-family lots in the Wallen Subdivision just south of Greystone Road, near Fallbrook Drive. This is aerial photograph. Um, the red outline is showing the area which will be the three single-family lots that will be created by this final plat. Um, this is a, a general description showing the layout of those three lots and the outlaw. On this double slide, on the left side is the approved preliminary plat from two thousand and two, showing the layout of these three lots. And on the right is the present configuration on the final plat, um, showing that, uh, the layout is consistent with that plan. And staff has determined also that this proposal is consistent with that two thousand and two preliminary plat and the master development agreement that was first approved in two thousand and two and extended again in two thousand and twelve. It also remains consistent with the comprehensive plan and the current zoning of the property. Staff recommends approval of this final plat, subject to the condition in the staff report, that it's consistent with that preliminary plat and master development agreement. And, uh, staff can, uh, answer any questions? Also, uh, agent for the applicant is at the, in attendance.
Commissioners?
Kind of have a question, but I would kinda like it off the record. Is that okay?
No, I think we need to keep everything on the record.
Um, let me think about my question. If it's... Because this gets, the land, okay, the application just gets, this is just final plat. Final plat and then it's ready to be sold and built on. So that's, it's just that topical, that piece, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just, I'm, I'm good. No questions?
I got no questions.
I would move for approval.
I have a motion for approval.
Okay.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
This also moves forward to the city council meeting on Tuesday, the twentieth.
And last item on the agenda, uh, variance, twenty eighteen dash ten, a side yard setback at forty-six Jefferson Court. Mr. Forte?
Well, thank you very much. Um, forty-six Jefferson Court is located in northwest portion of the city. The house was built in two thousand and four and has an attached garage. It has about a sixteen-foot wide garage door. The applicant would like to widen the garage by adding an additional stall onto the side of it. While it's a good-sized lot, it has been problematic to configure it on the site because of the configuration of the house and the odd shape of the property. The corner of the back of the garage would extend one point six feet into the seven-foot required setback on the, that rear portion, like I mentioned. The applicant did reduce the size of the proposed addition as much as possible and for a garage that would still meet his needs. The house footprint is about fifteen hundred square feet in addition to the existing four hundred square foot garage that's on the home. The lot is kind of a reverse pie shape that's wide in the front and narrows, um, towards the rear. Before approval of a variance, there's a few findings that must be made according to state statute and, uh, according to our zoning ordinance. And it has, and they include evidence that practical difficulties in complying with the regulations exist. Um, and staff believes that the odd shape of the lot would not allow for a small addition, even though there's, uh, a lot of generous size, um, with ample, ample room for it. Um, circumstances related to these difficulties may not have been created by the landowner. The property was fully constructed in nineteen ninety-four before being purchased by the applicant. Uh, so the applicant didn't, um, arrange the, the lot or, um, lay out the, the house on that particular lot. And, uh, finally, that the variance may not alter the essential character of the locality. Um, staff believes that the lo- character of the location will remain unchanged, um, because it will be in line with the existing house and the amount of variance requested is minimal and not visually perceptible, especially from the front of the home. Because, uh, from the front of the home, uh, the garage addition will still have about a fifteen-foot setback, uh, from the side property line. Immediate neighbors were notified of the request and no comments have been received. Staff recommends approval of the variance. And I can, uh, answer any questions the commission has. Also, the applicant is in attendance tonight.
I have a question. Is this, uh, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, is this in line with past precedent? I mean, have you guys done this before in similar situations? I mean, the neighbors don't care, it's gonna look good from the street. Um, just, I'm just curious if it's in line with past precedent? That's my only question.
Yeah, it is. Um, if, if there is extenuating circumstances, um, that's generally, um, something that has been approved. Um, in this situation, it's kind of the, the odd shape of the lot. Um, if there's not another alternative, um, to a layout, um, that would be a, another reason to approve it. Um, if this was a, a square lot and they wanted to, uh, put on, uh, another double garage, which is, um, you know, not as typical and they couldn't do it just because of the, it, it's not, um, there's not a, just room, um, it probably wouldn't meet a lot of those, uh, those findings. But since, you know, a third car garage is semi-typical, um, and, uh, there's plenty of room, it just happens to be, um, based on the, the, the lot layout that it doesn't, uh, fit on a small portion.
So have we had another situation very similar to this, that this commission has approved?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
With the extenuating circumstance, the only extenuating cir- circumstances that the lot was in odd shape?
Um, well, it's actually been for several different reasons. Um, odd-shaped lots are, are one of the, the more common ones. A lot of times it's because, uh, there might be a lot that has, um, a large gradient, um, issue and they, and they can't use a majority of their lot because, um, there'd be too much excavation or it just wouldn't be possible. Um, I'm not thinking of other ones, but, uh, but there, there's been, been several other ones that have been used as justification.
I've got a question.
Commissioner Johnson?
Um, I'm seeing seven-foot setback and the drawings are showing fives.
Um, in your staff report, there's a, a better description, um, based on, um, finer measurements that the applicant took after, um, drawing out that, the description that's on the screen now.
Right.
Um, he kinda goes through, um, what his measurements were and, and that's, that's what, uh, we're using, uh, for determining, um, what the setbacks were, will be. Um, the, the, the drawing that's shown here shows it just a little bit larger than it would be, um, because, you know, we wouldn't allow the, the structure to go into that five-foot setback. Um, so after this drawing was made, um, the applicant had taken measurements, um, from the, from the house itself to the property line to determine that it's one point six, uh, feet into the seven-foot setback.
Okay, but it's a five-foot setback? Or am I missing something?
It's a seven-foot setback.
And why am I seeing fives on this drawing?
Those aren't setback lines, those are, uh, perimeter drainage and utility easements.
Drainage and utility easements, very good.
Good question.
Thank you.
My only question is, as far as just the city's process, um, given they received approval, what type of verification is done on the backside as far as, you know, the construction? Verifying whether it is, you know, in close proximity to that and they come in and build fourteen feet?
Sure. Um, when, uh, the property is formed up for the foundation, before it's poured, the building inspectors will go out there and, and measure it to make sure it's consistent with this plan, um, and consistent with the, the dimensions that were given to city staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Um, do you know if the building materials that are gonna be used on this are going to be consistent with what's currently in the, on the house itself, Justin?
Um, I believe the applicant, yes, has, uh, said that they're gonna be the same as that's on the house currently.
Great. Perfect.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Um, I wa- I see how the roof drains to the neighbor. The, the garage roof goes to the neighbor. Um, and I, I, I'm glad to see that it's not the whole house going that way. Um, but it'll be just that much more to go to that property. Um, closer to the line, not as enough, not, not as much places for it to infiltrate. Um, so I guess I'd say that out loud because I just want the impact on the neighbor, um, you know, to be considered for drainage.
Sure, so how, uh, this, the grading was supposed to work out for the, these subtype of subdivisions is there's supposed to be a, a, a little bit of a swale between the two properties taking place in that five-foot, uh, drainage utility easement?
Okay.
So any water that's coming from his property should go into that swale and then go to the, to the, either to the street or back to a subtype of a drainage, um, catching, uh, facility. Um, our, our ordinance does require that, uh, no drainage can be directly, um, sent across the property line. So, like, you know, if there is an issue with that, he'd be required to, to accommodate that if, if a new, um, addition on his site was ending up to create drainage issues.
So is it, I couldn't tell, I looked online too before I came to see if, there's, there must not be any fences here. I don't, so then like, for the neighbor to get his lawn mowed and there's, or, or if, I guess if somebody wanted to put, like, if the applicant wanted to put a fence, that's a five-foot setback, right?
Um, the fence, according to the zoning ordinance, can go up to, but not on the property line.
Up to, but not on.
Yep, and it also can't impede any drainage flows. So if, if there's a drainage flow in an area perpendicular to the fence, it would have to be either a, a wire-type fence, um, or it'd have to be held up off the ground.
So just a random fun question. Say, uh, the neighbor did have a problem with this being built. Would that change some of the past precedents? I mean, I'm just curious. You know, I mean, I, I don't see any problem with this one here at all, but, you know, if the neighbor did have a problem with it, would we look at this differently or?
Um, well, you would, you could hear what the, the neighbor has to say. They may bring up, uh, some, some counterpoints that, uh, change some of the, um, the findings that were prepared by staff. Um, but, uh, you know, that isn't your purview to listen to their, their concerns and see if it would, um, it would change any of those. You know, probably that could have a, if they had any good points that you agreed with, that could have, uh, some impact to how it could alter the essential character of the locality, which could be a reason for denying it.
Sure. Visibility, for instance, yeah.
Can I mention something?
Go ahead.
I guess what I was thinking I was gonna, what was gonna, what the, okay, cause at the beginning, in order, you know, to, the extenuating circumstances, I was... I'm trying to figure out what's, what's, I mean, extenuating circumstance is, I wanna build a garage. I wanna add on to my garage, but it'll, it'll be, it'll hit that setback. But to me, an extenuating circumstances is, why do you have to add the garage? I, is there other sites that could add a, a stall that could be used for the purpose of? I mean, that, I don't know. I guess I don't look at, I wanna, you know, that it's, it encroaches upon a foot and a half of the setbacks as being an extenuating circumstance.
Well, an extenuating circumstance isn't, isn't what's required by law to, 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 to have. Um, generally, extenuating circumstance is what, um, helps to show that, uh, these findings are evident. And the, the first and the main one is evidence that practical difficulties in complying with the guidelines exist. And that's really what burden is on the applicant to show. And, uh, he's, he's showed that, um, he's having practical difficulties in putting a third stall on his garage. And he's listing the reasons why. Um, and the reason why that he listed was that he's got an odd-shaped lot. And, um, and that, and that's, that's what he showed and that's, that's what staff, um, believes is, is the issue, uh, with this.
I mean, I'm looking at it too and going, he's not gonna add a garage going, uh, I don't know. If that's north and south, he can't put one going north. And he can't, I mean, he could extend it out, but it would, that would look terrible with a short driveway. And there's really nowhere else to put a garage or extend the garage on this lot. And so it does make sense in this case to kinda bring it there, especially when there's a tree covering. I mean, it's... I mean, it's gonna...nobody's gonna know a thing. If that person on the corner doesn't have a problem with it, I just, you know, as long as it's not something...it's something that we'll do for anybody that comes to the planning commission, I don't have a problem with either. I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we would do this for anybody in this situation. 'Cause I know some planning commissions, if it gets into that setback area at all, they don't like to approve it. You know, it's like, we wanna...a setback's a setback. But, I mean, I think there is a practical difficulty in complying regardless of whether this is a need or a want, right?
Yeah, and staff does meet with people fairly often that do want to build a garage, and their lot's just not big enough. Or they just wanna build a super-large garage that generally is not common, and it just doesn't fit on their lot. In those situations, we explain how they have to prove that there's, you know, practical difficulties, that it's consistent with the locality, and it's, you know, not of any fault of their own that they're in that position. And, you know, generally, most people don't have any kind of justification for it, but, you know, often, we have come across odd-shaped lots, or, you know, maybe very narrow lots that have a lot of, you know, room, but you just can't put, you know, a standard house on the lot, and so we look at variances for those situations.
So I'm actually gonna agree with Commissioner Seebenall here a little bit. I think there are actually ways to get around this.
Okay.
You can build a smaller addition.
That's true.
You don't have to go that 1.6-foot. You could chop the corner off. You could pull the back forward a little bit. I think there's lots of options. Now, none of those may be attractive to the applicant. That's not what they want.
Right.
But I think there are options. I do have a little bit of a problem about saying that one of the difficulties is that it was constructed this way before the applicant purchased the house? Well, the applicant purchased the house. They knew full well what...where it sat on the lot and what shape the lot was. So I have a little bit of an issue with us using that as a standard difficulty when we review these variances, 'cause, well, they bought it, you know? They knew what they were buying. Now, that said, I tend to be a libertarian by nature, and I think people should be able to use their property for what they want, and this seems like a really minor thing. So I don't know that I'm opposed to it, but I do think we need to be very careful about setting precedent, because, you know, the next guy's gonna come along and want to encroach two feet. So where's our line, right? If it's not...if it's not the line that was drawn by the ordinance, which is seven feet, then where's our line? And so I think we do have to have very good justification for why we're granting this particular variance if we're gonna do it.
And if I could add, we have worked with the applicant for a while on this proposal, and he did shrink the garage down as much as he could to still have it be functional, and that's kinda where evidence of practical difficulties comes in, because he could build a six-foot wide third-car stall on here. It wouldn't really be practical. Same thing with, you know, clipping the back corner off the garage. It makes construction much more difficult. It looks strange, and what do you really gain? 1.6 less of an encroachment into a very small section of the whole side property line's setback.
Go ahead.
Was it ever explored to put a shed in the backyard? A one-car garage?
Well, not with us. I don't know if that would meet the needs in having...I think it's for a vehicle, so...
Okay.
It'd be difficult to get back there.
It's for a vehicle.
I did have a question about the...are there plans for the driveway to change?
Just do a...off the existing driveway?
So just closer to the garage, do a little sweep over?
Something like that.
The applicant just said that he would be adding a section to sweep off the existing driveway to meet to the front of the third stall.
But the cutout in the curb would stay the same.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or comments? It's a good discussion.
It is.
It's just, you know, if we approve this one...
Right.
And the next person comes in and they want the setback to go farther into something, you know, we have to be careful that we're not using different logic for approving or denying the next one. That's...does anybody else have any...
Yeah, I would just say, Justin, maybe for their benefit, would it be possible to review similar circumstances maybe that we evaluated last year? I'm thinking of the one over by, I think it's Commissioner Johnson's house in historic area where they're adding the garage, and it was, you know, we were dealing with, they wanted room, green space between the garage and the house, and we were dealing with a setback to the alleyway in the back. I mean, it's 20 feet, I think, was the requirement, and we allowed them that, 12 feet. And we discussed, you know, okay, if you got a full-size truck, how big's a full-size truck? Parking stalls are 18 feet, and we're allowing 12 feet. So, you know, I think if we're gonna, you know, discuss setting circumstances for future discussions, I don't know that this situation of, you know, one foot, six inches is the one that we hinge on. We should maybe reflect back on other things that we've looked at and see if there's other circumstances where, you know, they're just worth revisiting, because I think this one's minor compared to what we have looked at in the past.
Thanks for that, Rob. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Elba.
I think...it's my opinion, too, that we need to be conscious of, you know, the changing times, and when these houses were built, there was only two-car garages were the standard. Now it's three cars, and that's for a good reason. People have a lot of things that they put in garages. I'd rather see a garage sitting here than a bunch of stuff sitting outside. I don't think we're setting a precedence by doing this. I mean, I think we need to re...we need to evaluate each one as it comes up and just take a good look at it. I think this one in itself, I don't really see any issues with it. I think it's a good plan. I think he's gone through and done some good due diligence. He's worked with the city. I see no issues with this one at all, and it's gonna be totally different than the next one. So on that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this variance for the setback.
All right. Commissioner Elba makes motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Bars, is it any final discussion? Go ahead.
This is me again being new, so I bear with me. I apologize. If it doesn't go at this point, what happens then? Is it just dead in the water, or it just needs to be relooked at? I don't know that part of the process.
Well, the planning commission will be making a recommendation to the city council. This will be going to the city council next Tuesday on the 20th.
Mm-hmm.
We don't actually have any authority. We just make recommendations.
Sure. So the city council would just see how the vote went? That some people say yea, some people say nay?
Sure. They would take the planning commission's recommendation into consideration. They would also listen to...read the staff report and allow the applicant and neighbors to make comments.
So then, like, his comment about reviewing things in the past, that will come into play, or it won't?
Yeah, we can...we can present other rationale that's been used in the past. You know, staff is cognizant of setting precedent for these. We would recommend that they're all reviewed on their own merits and look at their individual circumstances. I've been here 10 years, and we've never had a variance with the same requests that had the same circumstances.
Commissioner Bars, were you...when you mentioned that, were you talking specifically about this one or more generically?
No, I was saying the point as far as when we were talking about, you know, setting the stage, that to their benefit, since they hadn't been part of prior discussions, that, you know, in this circumstance, again, I would agree that, you know, each has to be evaluated on its own merit, but the concern of, you know, encroaching one foot six, you know, past things that we've looked at, you know, we've, you know, allowed other deviations in variances to a greater degree than this. When, again, when you evaluate on, you know, extenuating circumstances, again, I looked at that one and said, do you want 10 feet for your dog? You could have eight. You could push it back. You could do a smaller garage. I mean, an 11-foot garage is a pretty small garage I look at, so I think that's, again, a reasonable request. We're looking at a 28-foot garage, I think, on the other one. So I thought that we're gonna have more room to give on that situation, you know, than what we're doing here. I mean, there's not really a gap or a smaller 11 feet.
Sure.
Yeah, and with what he was mentioning about, you know, hey, everybody wants a three-car garage, there ain't no doubt about that. So precedence is, in my opinion, is part...I mean, and I think some of this is coming from me being new. I don't know this history, so I just know everybody wants a three-car garage.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you said, Rob. So I have no further discussion. If we're good, I'd like to...I mean, we have...could we take a vote on the motion?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second for approval of the variance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And again, this will go to final approval from the city council on next Tuesday, the 20th.
All right. All right. Is there any other business for us to discuss?
I'm just gonna give a quick update. The last time we met, we, I believe, looked at Smart Ride Home Occupation. The planning commission recommended denial of that. The city council's final decision was to also deny that request. Since that time, I've heard that the applicants have found a commercial space to keep the vehicles for the business. And there's no upcoming applications pending quite yet for our next meeting scheduled for February 26th. And the only other item I have is just to update you that it looks like the city will be selling the Hudson building fairly soon, possibly early next week, to Confluence Development after a long process on that, to say the least. Yeah.
Is there a groundbreaking date by any chance? Is that still...that's still being worked out, too?
Yeah, so they're gonna buy it from us and, you know, take over maintenance responsibilities, and they'll probably kick into high gear with their planning process. They've gotta have all their approvals approved by the state historic preservation office still, so that's gonna take some time. But I'm sure that they'll be eager to start working on the building, being that they'll have, you know, carrying costs and...
And we'll still see a final site plan on that, right? Will come before this by?
Yep, there's still a final site plan from this...you know, from the standpoint of landscaping and the parks and parking, so to look at.
Thanks for the update.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.